Good evening. This is a meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is 7:00 PM and the date is February the 8th. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. The board consists of five members and two alternates. The alternates taking full part in the discussion and becoming voting members in the absence of a member or when a member abstains for conflict of interest. Present tonight are John Golsey, Greg Lavelle, Michelle Drabel is not here although she might appear, Joan Kronowski, and alternates Lisa Carson and Kate Houseley. I am Betty Hall of the acting chair. Also present are zoning administrator John Pesky and secretary Paul Eschenbacher. The board operates according to the following procedure. The chair will name and describe the case. The administrator or secretary will state the basis of the objection and any applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. The applicant or their representative will give reasons why the appeal should be viewed favorably. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard and anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. If necessary, the appellant or their representative will offer concluding testimony or rebuttal remarks. Testimony from the floor will be closed at that point and the board will deliberate and render a decision. According to City Code Section 2307-03B, the board has the power to grant variances from the strict application of the code, provided the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, the spirit of the code is observed, and public safety and welfare are secured, and substantial justice is done. According to City Code Section 2307-10C, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the board finds based on direct specific findings of fact that each of the following conditions has been supported, and there are six of these conditions. Practical difficulty and undue hardship. Because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of the regulations would result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. Exceptional circumstances. There are exceptional circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone in the same vicinity, while the granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that's denied to other properties in the same zone in the same vicinity. Minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment. Authorizing of such variances will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which the variance is sought, one or the other or in combination, is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. The board also has the power to review decisions of the zoning administrator when an error is alleged. Here requests for conditionally permitted uses. Here requests for the substitution of nonconforming uses. Determine the number of required off-street parking spaces if the specific use is not contained in Section 2311 Table B. Here requests for temporary use of structures or premises. Consider requests for extension of temporary permits after receiving a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission. And here requests for business uses of variance after receiving a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission. And here requests for variance for the strict application of Athens City Title 25 flood damage prevention. Any person, resident or officer, department or appointed body of the city of Athens aggrieved by a decision of the board may petition the Athens County Court of Common Please concerning the illegality of the decision. Such petition must be filed within 30 days after the mailing of the decision of the board to the applicant. We have two cases tonight. One of them was scheduled for the last meeting but was rescheduled for tonight and that is Case 1015V at 250 Columbus Road. The applicant is requesting variances from Section, I'm sorry, from ACC 2303-13I-4D to allow two freestanding sides on one lot where one freestanding side per lot is allowed and to allow a sound, a sign with 300, no, I'm sorry, 103 square feet of area where 50 square feet is the maximum allowed. Our other case tonight is 1102V. It concerns a property at 24 Spring Street. They're requesting a variance from ACC 2310-01 Table B off-street parking to allow a rental unit with one onsite parking space and one leased off-site parking space on an adjacent property where two onsite parking spaces are required. So, first case is the sign at Columbus Road. Mr. Yes, I always forget that. Yes, we would like to swear in the people who are going to speak so if you have, intend to say anything at all tonight, will you stand and affirm? Anybody who wishes to speak should stand. Do you affirm that you will tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Yes, thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. Eschenbacher, did you have something that you wanted to introduce us to about the first case?
Well, as far as Taylor Motors goes, that property used to be outside of the city. It was recently annexed and when it came in annexed, it had the two existing signs there which the city must accept when the property is annexed. However, if either one of the signs are damaged or needs to be repaired or replaced, you have to get a variance for it. These two signs in front of Taylor Motors were damaged as it says in their letter in the severe windstorm we had in September and they just seek to replace one of the signs.
Anything else?
No, I don't see any questions.
So, would the representative for this property and the sign come to the podium?
Senator.
Yes. Will you tell us your name and your address, please, just for the record?
My name is Gregory Stone Rock and the address of the business is 250 Columbus Road, Athens, Ohio.
Do you want to tell us more than Mr. Eschenbacher has already told us? Do you want to describe what you intend to do?
He said it all. The signs were damaged and we want to, as he said, we put the signs up, we were annexed into the city, they've been there for a long time. The windstorm came through and blew the signs up and we simply want to, you know, fix the signs back up again.
Okay, so tell us the dimensions of the signs that you will put up. Will they exactly replicate what was already there? Is there going to be any difference in the signs?
It won't be any larger. I don't have the exact inch, you know, inch by inch because the one sign that's in question is, is an older sign, but it's basically the same, going to be the same size sign, yes. Two or smaller, let's put it that way.
Okay, so if we don't know the exact dimensions, then I am assuming that we will, I don't know if you put in here the size of the old ones that got ruined.
Well, he said the square feet.
Okay, all right. So that's part of the variance, isn't it?
Right, then that's, so I'm sure we can keep it in that realm of things. Since the exact replacement isn't right there, I can't really tell you.
All right.
That's the intention for all intents and purposes, just to replace what we currently have.
Okay, and so there'll be two freestanding signs on the one lot and one of the signs will have 103 square feet. That's the intention.
On this page, it does give dimensions of the sign that they're proposing.
Okay, do we have that?
Yes, we do. You didn't pass it.
Under the thing there, it's eight by 12.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I remember seeing that now.
And these signs, and this sign is lighted, but it's always been lighted, correct?
Yeah, they always light, they light up, you know, as night comes on, they automatically light up.
I can't tell what this is saying. These are the pylons. I can't tell what this actually says.
I guess we'll just have to say 103 is the maximum.
And I want to clarify, I kind of forgot about that piece of paper. I didn't pick the file together on your representative, but that is, that's the sign. So I believe that, you know, that's part of the application you have.
Okay, so the signs will basically say the same things but be different dimensions, is that right?
Well, they're Chrysler brand, yeah, it's going to be a Chrysler sign.
Okay.
The sign we're getting the variance on is a Chrysler branded sign.
Okay, if I held this out to you, would you be able to tell me the exact dimensions because I don't know how to read this little chart?
He can.
Okay, what does it say?
Here. I'll show you. It's.
Is it this page? To be honest.
There we go. A, B, C, and D, and they're going to this eight by 12 sign, so the A is the height, B is the width of the post, C is the width of the sign, and D is how tall the sign itself is.
Okay, and then this, this is the height?
No, this is the height here. B is the post, so the names, that's length by width there, C and D.
Is that the one you're choosing right there?
Is this the total?
Yeah, eight by 12, no, 103.6.
Okay, all right. So it will be 1.3.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other sign is not?
Ground to top is 30 feet.
No, it's, it's 35.
No, it's the second one on the list.
No, you're on the second one.
Sir, are you removing that damaged facing and put a new one on? Is that what it is? Changing the whole frame, everything?
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
It's whatever's on that piece of paper.
Okay, all right.
Whatever's on that thing right there is what it is.
We need to say on the paper what it is.
I think the frame was damaged enough. It's twisted and that.
That's my question was.
Okay, questions from the board? If that's all you need to tell us, then you can sit down.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, is anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this sign variance? In general comment? In opposition? Okay, thank you. We'll just close the floor at this point and see if we can get a motion in order and see what happens. Motion, someone?
Okay, I'll give the motion. I move the board consider a variance for 250 Columbus Road, Case Number 10-15V, in which case the appellant is requesting variances from ACC 2303-13I-4D to allow two freestanding signs on one lot where one freestanding sign per lot is allowed and to allow a sign with 103 square feet of area where 50 square feet is the maximum allowed. Have a second?
I second. All right, do you want to discuss it as a law or you just want to go through the findings?
I don't have any comment.
Okay. The first thing we have to address is the practical difficulty and undue hardship, which says because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to the specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of the regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that's unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. Can you speak to that?
Well, it's been a damage, you know, it's a hardship, it's probably not usable as it's supposed to be usually, so that's a hardship.
Well, and the.
The size again, it's already there, the frame is there.
Okay, and it does, we are addressing the exceptional and extraordinary circumstances even though we're talking about the undue hardship and the exceptional circumstance is?
The windstorm.
Yes, that it was. This is a, basically a re-grandfathering of something that was already allowed. And the exceptional circumstances, again, I suppose we could talk about the fact that it is grandfathered and there was a storm. What about preservation of equal property rights?
I think it's already grandfathered.
Okay, all right. Is this a minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property?
They're staying the same, so that's pretty reasonable.
Okay. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the code or the public interest.
Well, no one's come to object. The sign's been this way for quite a while, so I think that would be no absence of.
Not of a general nature. The condition is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions. And in fact, we do have a sign regulation, but this one is exceptional in the fact that it was grandfathered and now they simply want to replace what they had. So, shall we vote? Okay, I'll start with Gregory Bell.
I say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and I will also vote, so you have permission to go ahead with your sign.
We're going to go. Sign in another application and we'll get you going.
I appreciate it.
Our second case tonight is at 24 Spring Street. The zone is R1. The case is 1102V and as I already said before, they're requesting a variance from ACC 2310-01 Table B off-street parking. So I think we should just ask Mr. Eschenbacher if there's something you think we need to know to begin.
Their letter of explanation was pretty thorough, so I don't have much of anything to add. Just if you drove past the house, you see that if they had smaller cars, they could probably fit two, one in the garage, one in the driveway, but we have to go by the dimensions of the city code and there's only one legally sized parking space on that property.
Okay, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
And it pertains to the leased parking spot. How many occupants are in the dwelling where the leased parking spot is?
I don't know. Probably that's the appellant's.
So let's ask the appellant to.
Well, I thought Poe would have checked that, right?
It's a private home, so.
Okay.
Could ask.
So it's not a rental property?
No.
Okay.
Okay, let's ask the appellant to come up to the podium, state your name and address and state your case. We have already read it, but tell us again.
Thank you. My name is James Huth and I live at 24 Spring Street, Athens, Ohio. And my wife, Sonia Marcus, and I are asking for this minimum variance from the code. We understand the six-month requirement for the property owner to be in the house or else they need a rental permit to have anyone else be in the home, whether they're renting or, or house-sitting. And so we're asking for just a one-time, one-year minimum variance from this parking spot requirement. To your question about the adjacent properties, we have letters of support from our immediate neighbor, which is a private residence, one person living in the house. The leased space is from our other adjacent neighbor, also a residence, a resident with one person living in the house. And, yeah, as the gentleman said, if our, if our garage door were, the code officer told us when they came out, looked at the property, if our door had been another foot wider, six inches wider on each side, a car could sail right through into the basement. Indeed, you used to be able to park, I used to park my truck in the basement before I put certain architectural door there. But, so, I mean, it appears that, yeah, the basement is a parking space, but it's not allowed to be counted as a parking space. But there's still a driveway and indeed every Halloween we're parking multiple vehicles in the driveway now, so, yeah.
So my understanding from the application that you made is that you and your wife intend to be out of the country.
Yes.
For a year.
One year.
And that this is something that you just want for a year?
That's right. Just, yes.
And you need somebody to sit in the house or rent it while you are away?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
And we will be returning to the home and that will again be our primary residence and our belongings are staying in the home. It's not a traditional rental in any sense.
Well, when I came tonight, I mentioned to Mr. Eschenbacher a slightly different proposal, but you would have to agree to it. We have the option of granting temporary use permits for one year.
Okay.
And it would be essentially a lesser animal than a variance because a variance goes with the property forever.
Okay.
Although I suppose we could put a condition on it that said it was only for one year, but it seems to me more logical that we would simply say, how about if you have a temporary use permit for a year accomplishing the same thing? Give you the permission to lease the next door space and at the end of the year you would come back and the terms would disappear.
Not knowing any better, that appears to meet our requirements. Yeah, our needs.
Well, maybe we should let the code officers speak a minute and see what they think.
Well, it's allowed. All it does is, I think what the board is mainly concerned with is if they grant a variance, as she said, it's with the property forever. So even if you sold it, someone else could come along and use the same variance to say, oh, well, I can turn this into a rental with one space and a one off-site space. With a temporary use permit, you get the same thing. You can park in the one space, but it just lasts one year.
Okay.
And if something unforeseen happens and you're going to be away for more than one year, you're allowed to reapply to extend temporary use.
Okay.
So you don't have to fret on the 364th day or anything, you can come back and, if you want to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that would be, would be fine.
Paul, that condition for the variance is as long as he has the lease, right, for the next door?
Yeah.
It's not forever?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As with any off-site leasing things, they have to.
Right, and the second thing is that would you be back by February of 2012?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, he has the option of extending it.
Yeah, yeah. But if he's out of the country, he's not coming to our board for that. Okay, so you're saying to extend the conditional use, you wouldn't need to come back and petition again?
Somebody has to represent you.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Doesn't have to be you, you can have a representative for you.
Okay.
If you should still be out of the country.
That sounds fine.
What do you all think?
I think that's very wise.
I think that's a more reasonable choice.
That's the wiser thing to do.
Okay, so anything else you want us to know?
I don't think so, no. Thank you.
Okay, so is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody in general comment or in opposition? Apparently not, okay. Anybody else want to say anything because, before we close the floor to discussion? Okay, all right, so are we supposed to use these same conditions?
Yes, you can use the same findings and say the same.
Okay, all right, so shall we have a motion for a conditional use permit for this property?
I move that we consider a conditional use.
Temporary.
Temporary, conditional use.
Yeah, it's just temporary. There are two different things.
For 24 Spring Street, Case Number 11-02V, they are requesting a variance from ACC 23, not a variance, I'm sorry, a temporary use from ACC 23.10.01 Table B off-street parking. Requirements to allow a rental unit with one onsite parking space and one leased off-site parking space on adjacent property not in the same ownership where the requirement is two onsite parking spaces or one onsite parking space and one off-site parking space within 250 feet of the property and in the same ownership.
Have a second.
Do we need to specify where this spot will actually be?
If you want to.
Let's, let's put that in there.
So we'd like to add the space, the leased space is at what location?
27.
27 Spring Street.
Okay, and we've already got a second to that, okay. Okay, let's go through the findings.
We don't have to do the findings. We don't have to do the findings.
I thought you said we did do the findings.
I think we do, for temporary use.
We don't.
We do, but not for.
On substitution, you don't. I think temporary use is the same setup as a regular variance where you go through the six findings.
But it's not a variance?
No, it's a temporary use, but I think you still need to go through the six findings for a temporary.
Okay, we could do that. Okay, what is the practical difficulty and what would be the undue hardship in this case? Why?
In going away for a year, which they're doing, they, they need to have some one house in or rent.
Living in their house.
And by code, it's required that, that they meet certain criteria and that's why they're here.
Okay, and people certainly do leave not, not so frequently for a year, so, and again, this exceptional circumstances, there are exceptional circumstances or conditions applying to the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes of uses in the same zone.
Or the driveway and the garage are too small for two or three cars.
Sure, okay, they almost meet but don't. And again, we, I think we stew around about these two things all the time because they overlap each other, so.
That's a narrow street as well. I'd like to see the cars off the street if possible.
Of course, of course, okay. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others, while granting the very, the conditional use will not confer special privilege. I think that's true. People leave town all the time. Some people get sitos without letting anybody know. People rent their houses without getting a rental permit, do something more informal.
I think it's admirable that they came forward.
Sure.
I think it's the first one we've ever had.
And so you should be able just for a year to call your car somewhere else. Is this a minimum variance? Make a reasonable use of the property? Absence of detriment will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property, will not materially impair the purposes of the code or public interest.
Well, we have two or one or two letters here. One letter.
Plus.
Plus the lease, lease agreement.
Okay, and I'll just say this is not really of a general nature. We have rules in place to handle set situations and they are managing through this. So comments, questions? Okay, so let us vote and we'll start with Joan Kronowski.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay, so you have your conditional use for the year.
Have a good trip.
Okay, we have a little bit of business to deal with. What about the minutes from the previous meeting?
See, they were fixed according to your note.
Before you go to minutes, I want to go to, do something on the older business there.
Okay, have we got the minutes settled? Do you want, it's before the minutes?
Which is on the agenda first, I don't know.
Just disposition, I'll have to sort them out.
Okay, you did it first.
Yes, minutes are fine.
Okay, minutes are fine. All right, so.
Two weeks ago, Integrated Services was in here and was denied their variance for first-floor residential housing. And everybody remembers, and I just want to give you an update of where the project is at. This is what was proposed.
Yes.
This is what we're getting. And it meets code, so I just want to throw it out. It is the exact same structure on stilts and now it does meet the code. Eight bedrooms, parking is there, it's on the second floor and above, so.
Well, one of the concerns of the neighbors, some of the neighbors that came to speak was the traffic.
It was all about traffic and cars.
Again, that's what I tried to emphasize at the last meeting, that I understand that, but it is still a permissible use. That's what I said, I understand your sympathy, but it's an acceptable permissible use for a commercial business to be on that. a commercial business to be on that site, and that's what they've done. You cannot, the use is permissible.
Except they still, they still won't, they won't have a commercial business, it'll just elevate the-
But, but nothing's changed, the fact that it's elevated. So, it's the second and third floors.
Then they won't have any handicap accessibility.
They don't have the handicap accessibility, but other than that, we're going to-
Which was one of the things they said they needed for their client.
They said they had to.
Well, I guess they're going to place them elsewhere, or go on an elevator, or stair lift, or whatever. I mean, I'm just giving you an update on the project.
Well, nothing is necessarily written in stone, and they didn't really want to go with this bigger project. Is there any way to rehear this and amend what we heard, the other things?
I don't think you listen to it, or?
No, I don't think so.
I think the answer to that is that if you wish, I can ask Pat Lang to find out if it can be rediscussed.
I really don't want to rediscuss it. I don't really want to rediscuss it.
Okay.
It shouldn't be allowed.
Well, we're just going to get the-
No, I don't want to feel pressured by the fact that they're doing something that maybe other people may not like.
Sure.
You know, our decision was very thoughtful and considerate, right?
They said when they were here, they threw out that option of a bigger building, and you still voted no, so, fine, okay.
Okay, I just want to let you know where the status of that project is, that it's still moving forward, so when you see-
I guess the question would be with the federal funding that they're seeking, and, you know, and the housing, the low-income housing, if it has to be handicap accessible.
They're going to have to do that.
They can put in an elevator.
They will.
Well, they can.
I can't speak to that, I don't know. You know, if it's through Metropolitan Housing, they do have many of units down on Oak Drive that they could place the handicap clientele there and replace somebody from down there into this structure that's not handicapped, so.
And if they were thinking about placing handicap people in there, and they said they hadn't thought far enough ahead, but they were not allowing enough space for handicap parking, that was another issue.
That we discussed, I mean, you're right, and then they said that. They would have, they would have had to taken probably one spot and made it two foot wider, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to let you know, when you see it happening, say, what's going on?
Well, one of the things that's been addressed back and forth by email is that we are supposed to have an annual meeting, typically in February, and it seems to me in the past that that meeting has been primarily an organizational meeting, because we used to have a more permanent chair than we have now. And perhaps there were some other things that were discussed that I don't recall. Now, there are some other issues that people would like to discuss, and I don't know whether it's appropriate for us to take those on tonight, or to schedule a meeting where we could maybe have Mr. Lang come and help us through things like, how do we actually reach decisions? Are we doing a reasonable job of reaching decisions? And I think there's always been a question, do we need to find for each and every one of these findings, or if there is a no along the-
Put together those questions, have everything prepared, to where maybe I can then forward it to him, let him have a chance to review everything, and then he can fill out the one of the meetings to kind of give you an answer to your questions.
Okay, and then, there, yes, there were some other things, perhaps smaller things than that, but we can certainly get those together on paper and address those, if that's what you'd like to do. Okay, so he can think about them.
Are there any cases for next month?
We don't have anything scheduled.
Yeah, we got one, will be coming in, just one to my knowledge at this time.
Does it have to be an I or B?
No, I don't think so. I guess with the path, you know, and immediately.
I would think if they're training, yeah, I think that's what it needs to be.
What if he comes next month, same time, and then if there is no case or one case, then maybe we can discuss it afterward.
I think that sounds suitable.
Would Mr. Lang be available next month?
I'll find out, I'll find out if he's available. I suggest that you try to get him the questions with a couple of weeks, so he can prepare.
And I think some of you have already put these together. Terry, were you working on that with John or whomever? So if you all want to get together and add even more stuff, get together whatever seems appropriate, ask the rest of us if they have concerns about the order of the findings or these other things that you were thinking about, then, and just send them on to Mr. Lang, then we'll see if he could meet at the next meeting after a meeting, assuming that the meeting's not too long.
Okay.
I guess the other question is, do you want to continue to rotate the chair as we've been doing?
We could talk about that at the meeting.
No, we should talk about that at the meeting.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
And this would be an organizational meeting after, after.
And perhaps a little bit of training too, instead of just organization.
Well, training and organizational.
Okay. Anything else we need to discuss? If not, we are adjourned.